All right, very good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham's Only Boulder Field for tonight's meeting Wednesday, February 27, 2019, at 6:30 p.m., and we are at the Wareham Multi-Service Center with 320, 48 Marion Road. I'm going to call the meeting to order in a little bit longer. First, I want to welcome a new member, Robert Haskell, just joined us on time version, and learned about everything, trained fire titles. So glad to have him on the show, members. We still have openings for someone who would like to join. One more opening. Okay, so welcome, Robert.
Thank you.
So he's to my right, next Veronica Dabines, my on left Jake Morrison, Tony John Kendrick. I'm planning on getting back myself to the chair now that it's classy and after watching through my eye, just came in, I think I see a cloud. All right, we have some minutes. The minutes for February 13, 2019. I know if you need...
No, if you do, yes, I review them, they're fine.
So somebody would like to comment on the minutes? Okay, like a motion, please?
Make motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second by Robert, or they will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. That's all good. Next, and...
The next item on the agenda, Tim Smith of 83 Piner's Tribe. It's all set, there was no request needed for him on this one because of the findings.
Is that all just listed?
Yes.
All right, on motion, here in 10-18, would love to make a motion to this list at meeting. Do you have a second, Bob? I have a second. Second by Ron, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay. All right, 28-11, Rosebrook Place Site Plan Modification. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board.
For the record, my name is Rich Cirque. I'm an attorney from Plymouth, and I'm here tonight in behalf of the A.D. Makepeace Company. And I'm referring to a letter that was sent to the Board from Beals and Thomas dated February 12, 2019 pertaining to Rosebrook Place, a plan of which is on the easel to my right. For background purposes, the zoning board granted a special permit for the project in June of 2011. And following the 2011 approval, site plan approval, minor modifications were presented to the Board in February of 2016 and approved. And then finally, the project received its final certificate of occupancy from the Town Department of Inspection Services just this past December, December 20, 2018. And in the letter that Beals and Thomas indicated to you, they summarize what has been done, some changes that were made at the request of the Wareham Fire Department. And the letter concludes by saying that in order... There is a proposed conveyance of the lot on which the hotel is currently located. It's currently a laisser of the A.D. Makepeace Company, and that lot is proposed to be conveyed and fee to the La France Company. And in order to ensure that all the conditions of the Board's special permit and site plan approval will continue to be enforced once ADM doesn't own all of the land that's shown on the plan, I have created a proposed Owners Association Trust, and a copy of it was included in the letter from Beals and Thomas. And ADM will grant to that trust before the conveyance to the hotel, an easement for the purposes of enforcing the Board's conditions. And as I indicated, a copy of that easement and a copy of the trust were included in the letter from Beals and Thomas. And ADM is requesting that the Board confirm by countersigning our letter that the conveyance of the hotel lot to the La France Company, which is referred to as Cranberry in the in the letter, subject to and with the benefit of the easement to the homeowners association, the Owners Association Trust constitutes a minor modification to the Board's special permit and site plan approval, since it's a change of form really, rather than a change of substance. And I can tell you that I shared copies of both instruments with Mr. Rowley, answered his questions, and I think he's satisfied.
Yeah, I believe Charlie Bowen looked it up right there. Is he satisfied with that? I don't have anything written right in front of it. I did get an email today, said they received it and said on that. Just repeat for us, why do you need our consent to sell it?
Well, I don't need your consent to sell it, but the point is, is that there are... It was presented as a project that was owned by one landowner. Once a lot is conveyed to someone else, since there are cross easements and parking that serves all, I wanted the Board to know as a matter of full disclosure that it's the easement structure that's going to be a matter of record, that's going to bind and benefit all the lots that will be in place to enforce the conditions. And that easement and that trust has the express purpose of making sure that all the conditions of the special permit will survive and be enforced, even though the lots will not be owned by the same entity.
Okay, is La France Company will also get the benefits of that, all the easements?
That's correct. They'll have the benefits of them as far as the land that they don't own, and they'll have the burdens of them with respect to the land they do own.
Very well. Just going to pass to the Board, Robert, do you have any questions? Robert?
No.
Can you?
Aye.
Can you?
No.
You want to wait for a bench? When do you guys close in on that?
We're going to close imminently. It's... The conveyance date was scheduled to be March 1, which is Friday. And this is a similar type of letter that I've sent in the past and which the Board has countersigned.
Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor against? But I don't have a problem with that. They're not changing nothing in the premise, so...
The whole purpose is to make sure that the special permit survives in its complete form, and this mechanism will make sure.
I would really like to have seen a written opinion from the Town Council, but...
What's your concern?
I think it's a... They're not moving the building or...
The decision stays the same.
Yeah.
It's not changing.
He's just presenting to us the mechanisms that they put...
Yeah, I get it. I just haven't had an opportunity to read this, that's all. I don't have a problem with what I've heard. If what's written here is what I've heard, I don't have a problem.
Can you? I read it, but it looks... What you have it looks red?
Yes.
I mean, it looks red.
Yes.
Then I make a motion to grant the request and sign the thing.
All right, we have a motion to grant 28-11 for Rosebrook Place by John, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by John, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Are we signing by numbers or are we by associate numbers?
Yeah.
Do you want to... Do we need you to write a second page?
Uh, well, I have Veronica second, this one, one, two, three, four, five. So only Veronica, the fact, three, four, five. We alternate in that page. All right, we're going to move to the public hearings, 3-19, Joseph and Amy Gomes, 22-24, Shangri-La Boulevard.
I'm going to...
We're getting dead.
What should I say? I want to say member...
Just give us a minute.
I don't know what's on here. I don't know. So let's just assume tomorrow, and go on, so... We're going to complicate, like you said, until we get otherwise, and then... Okay.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on February 27, 2019 at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition number 3-19 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Joseph and Amy Gomes, care of Attorney Leonard Bello, 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., 02571, seeking to construct a new 24-foot by 36-foot detached garage located at 2224 Shangri-La Boulevard, East Wareham, Mass., appears on Assessors Map 119, lots 10 and 11 in the R130 zoning district.
All right, very well. In this matter, I'm going to recuse myself of conflict with Attorney Bello.
You want to share?
No. Veronica, I got Robert who set my claim. I guess you take over.
So...
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Very good. Okay, good evening, everybody. Before you, you have a package that I've submitted. Each of you should have that. And in it contains a Section 8, which is the letter of intent, and which addresses the statutory requirements for the variance that we're requesting. So I'm going to read that letter into the record, and we'll give you some background about Joseph and also about what he seeks to do. So Joseph, who sits beside me at the moment, is 54 years of age. He's been a full-time resident of Wareham since he was eight years of age. Joe and his wife, Anne, have been married for 30 years, have three grown children. Joe has worked for Teledyne Test Services for the past 38 years, where he now holds the position of field service manager. Anne works in computer design and drafting for Entergy, where she's been employed for the past 14 years. Anne and Joe purchased 24 Shangri-La Boulevard, Lot 11, in February of 2004. The lot in question, at its high point, abuts the road and runs at a steep decline before flattening out just before Glen Charlie Pond. The front of the house, as one would expect, faces the pond. In December of 2014, Joe purchased the abutting lot, which is Lot 10. And that actually doubles the size of his house lot and provided him with room to build a garage. So when Joe presented his plan to construct this garage, he learned that to satisfy current zoning regulations, the garage, being considered an accessory structure, could not be closer to the road than the existing house was. With the house being on the water, and the lot having a steep incline from front to back, the only possible place a garage could be located is closer to the road. Thus, the need for the variance. Article 6, Section 625 of the zoning bylaw entitled "Accessory Structures" states that the accessory structure must have a setback equal to or greater than the principal building's front yard setback. Therefore, a variance is required. These lots are located in a R130 zoning district and together now have a total of 17,088 square feet. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming house lot. We are dealing strictly with the construction of an accessory structure. According to our building commissioner, no other variances or special permits are required from the ZBA. The Conservation Commission has already reviewed and signed off on the engineer's plan for this building, and Mass DEP has already signed a project number to this project. Now, the statutory requirements for a variance, even though tough to meet, are certainly met in this particular instance. If you look at the building commissioner's denial letter, David acknowledges that it is due to the contours of the lot that dictate the location of the garage. It is due to the shape and topography of the property that the garage is unable to be located further from the road than the existing house. Due to the steep drop in elevation, the access to the garage must be at level... Must be level with the existing roadway. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would cause a substantial hardship, as it would then prohibit any addition of a garage to this property, which in today's world, a garage is more the norm than an extravagant convenience. The petitioner purchased the adjacent lot, which on its own would have been considered a separate, pre-existing, non-conforming building lot, but he did so specifically to allow for an addition to an accessory structure, so that his vehicles could safely be parked undercover. In designing the garage, due to the incline and the required height of the foundation sidewalls, there exists adequate room under the main floor of the garage to provide an area where Joe can pursue his hobbies, store his tools, and create a workshop. Granting the petition of this variance is neither detrimental to the neighborhood, nor would it derogate from the intent of the existing bylaw. This is strictly a residential area with both full-time residences and seasonal homes and cottages. There are other homes located off Shangri-La Boulevard which have the same topographical challenge and have a garage level with and abutting the roadway, while the primary structure, like Joe's, is below on the pond. This includes the property a stone throw away from Joe's lot, and I've attached the photo in Exhibit E, which is likewise on Shangri-La Boulevard, has a garage level with and abutting the roadway, while the primary structure is three flights of stairs below on the pond. If anybody is familiar with the area, that would have been Judge Baron Martin's home. So each of the criteria for a variance are met in this situation. The hardship is created in the uniqueness based upon the topography and the shape of the property. I've put photos, both of the front of the house, as you would see it from the roadway across the pond, and the elevations are clearly visible through the photos that we've shown. So that's our request. We're seeking that variance to build that garage, and it certainly would match the house, i.e., it's a very beautiful home. It's not a cottagey shack, and it's not a part-time home, it's a full-time home.
Okay, thank you. Usually, at this point, I'd turn to the Board, but I want to put things a little out of order and look to the room and say, is there anybody here from the public this evening that would like to speak in favor of this application? Yeah, hearing none. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Also hearing none. I'll turn back to the Board, starting from my right with Bob. Do you have any questions, Bob?
How close to the water is this garage going to be?
It's good. The offset for the... There's a 50-foot offset for the... From the wetlands is requirement, and we're further than that. I have to look at the drawing, but I believe we're further than the required setbacks for the Conservation Board.
Is there going to be any runoff issue with this, where this is quite hilly right there, and with that? What I'm seeing here, it's way away from the house. Is there going to be any runoff issue from that particular building itself, or...
So right now, right now, the existing plans have drainage for all the water coming off the roof into it, and then there's stone filtration on the existing drive going down to that area.
So everything coming off the roof, off the driveways, or anything like that, will be contained into a built-up system, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Veronica?
I'm just looking at setbacks, the property line. Is everything else in performance, or is that 20? Or is that bad, it's not, it's actually closer to the road than it's required?
No, according to... According to the building inspector, the only variance required is because of Section 625. So they've reviewed the plans, and that's the only... The only reason we're here is because it's closer to the roadway than the house.
The variance for the distance from the street to the farthest garage not being equal to or greater than the distance from the street to the house.
House, right. That's the...
That's the question of course.
That's his denial letter. And his... His denial letter is very straightforward in terms of... David acknowledges that this is really a... Something that satisfies the variance, but that doesn't mean that he's allowed to give the variance. It still requires us to come to this Board.
So I just want to be clear. The setback to the road is because it doesn't...
We meet the...
Just put it closer to the water. If you make it smaller, his car won't fit in the garage.
I think it meets the setback requirement for an accessory structure. It doesn't necessarily have to meet the setback required for a single-family home.
You all going for it?
Yes.
Go ahead, back to you, Bob.
What's the height of the garage itself? Like I said, I know that's pretty hilly over there, and how high above ground is that going to sit?
Well, we haven't had the plans drawn yet, but it's going to be a one... From the street level, it's going to be... It's going to look like a one-story ranch-type garage. It's not going to have a second floor, but it's going to have the under-basement, because rather than fill it, we're going to extend the foundation wall.
Will there be any access to the back of the building?
There'll be access to the side of the building, and there's actually... To get in the gable end, like a garage door. And there's access road now that goes down to the back of the house, or driveway.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So you're going to be like putting a basement under your garage, you're going to actually have a shop under your garage, under your garage?
Yes.
East stress appliance or something?
There's designs out there. I haven't finalized the design, but there's designs where they'll have a pre-stressed concrete floor set in.
Yeah, I just... Nothing, I just, I'm a curious guy.
Yeah. There's a few ways to do it, but we haven't just finalized it.
To my left, Jake, you want?
No, I think the project looks good. I'm familiar with the neighborhood, and there's a lot of houses like that, and there's really not much you can do, so I think it looks good.
I don't have any...
I think, at this point, I'd like to hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Come on.
Seconds. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So therefore, again, when I take the chair, I don't like to make motions, so would somebody make a motion?
Jane, you're pretty good at that. I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
As presented.
And thank you. And we're going to... We make an motion to approve, and the reason is, using Attorney Bell's words, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. You had a whole sentence there.
Yes.
Not detrimental to the neighborhood, and, you know, what was that?
There was a paragraph.
Oh, into the shape, the topography.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
It's all right in that?
Yeah, yes, it's...
As presented.
It flowed off your tongue so nicely, I'd like to...
Thank you. I can certainly call Ken tomorrow and give him the...
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I want that for the reasons...
Make it a little easier for you.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you. And anybody wanting to impose any conditions on this? No. So we got... For the record, to repeat, we have a motion to approve, as requested, a variance for the plans as presented. We have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're all set.
Thank you. I'll email you tomorrow.
That's fine. By the way, I really appreciate that the house side that faces the water is called the front of the house.
Yeah. Thank you.
Beth, 5-19, Verizon Wireless, and anyone?
You want to get this picture down?
You've got to send it actually to the structure, so I'm going to say it's right in your... You guys focus out on this, so he's...
Mine too.
Thank you. I want you to be alone, Tom.
I'd like to... You can take that one. You can keep the whole, the whole package. And will you pass this over to Jane, please, for me? You guys both on it?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to get that one, give it over before I... You guys both on it?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, that 10 one over there, this was my file, my application, but...
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on February 27, 2019 at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition number 5-19 for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 3, Article 320, Article 13, Section 1361, Number 4, of the Wareham zoning bylaws. Cilio Mystic, Connecticut, 063... Did I misalign? Partnership, sorry. To sell... That's a C.
Selco.
Selco, yes. That's my description, subscription. To Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, Care and Gearing and Associates, LLC, PO Box 98, Westminster, Connecticut, 06388, seeking to construct a 10-foot wireless communication tower above the existing building located at 191 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., that is on Assessors Map 47, Lot 1137, in the Wareham Village zoning district.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Try to use the microphone, please.
I'm hooked up here.
Excellent.
My name is Carl Gearing, I'm behalf of Verizon Wireless, and I'm joined by...
I see you have in front of you, and I found by doing so, I will often answer some of your questions in advance. So, under the second, on the second page of the cover sheet, is the table of contents for the ten tabs that you see there, the first being the official town form, as was read in the legal records, asking for a special permit, finding a variance. I just wanna correct the semantics or point out that we're not asking for a tower, no one should be freaked out here, we're simply proposing to add antennas to the roof of an existing building and then hide them behind some stealth sheathing so that you won't even see those, so there's no tower per se being proposed tonight, it's just rooftop antennas. Also, in behind tab one is the building inspector's letter where Mr. Bouchard had applied for building permit as part of the process, as was denied, and it was pointed out by the building commissioner that, you know, we need a special permit for the use, but then also this existing building in this zoning district is limited to forty feet high, the existing building's at fifty-three, so it's already an existing non-conforming structure as to its height. Now, we're proposing to go up an additional ten feet on top. There's a provision in the bylaw that talks about satellite dishes not exceeding ten feet above roofs, we're not proposing a satellite dish, so that's the closest you could find in the, in the bylaw that even comes close to what we're doing, so we're keeping it at ten feet, but we are going ten feet above something that's already not conforming. So, as, as the building commissioner pointed out, we're respectfully asking for a finding that what we're proposing is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, and because we're increasing the nonconformity, there's a necessity to request for a dimensional variance for that height as well, so those are the three elements of the petition. Tab two is my statement of support, I'm not gonna read this to you, but I'm gonna go back and touch on it, and what I've done in here is given you a brief introduction, which I'll do through demonstration of the plans and so forth, then I've gone through the entire wireless section of your bylaw, addressing every single item point by point, and a lot of them are not applicable because we're not proposing a tower. If you read your bylaw, the wireless section, a lot of it is contemplating new freestanding cell towers, and that's not what this is. So, you'll see in a lot of there, not applicable, not applicable, not applicable, but to the extent, excuse me, that it does apply, we have addressed in there how we are in compliance or may need a waiver, or, or what we're doing is in harmony. And then, I did the same for the general special permit requirements under section fourteen sixty, and again, I'm not gonna read them to you, but I'm gonna come back and touch on them, and then I get into the section thirteen sixty finding requirements, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, and then I get into the variance requirements of section thirteen sixty-one subsection four, and address those, and your bylaw pretty much reiterates Mass. law forty-eight, section ten, of the variances, variance requirements, and I've laid out in the narrative how in our opinion we qualify, but I also threw in there some case law, we're a little bit different than the normal run-of-the-mill variance application in the sense that we're a wireless provider, and we have some additional benefit of case laws to determine the need to propagate your signal is another valid reason for a hardship for a variance. It's a little bit different than someone asking for a side ear setback for a deck or something like that, it's, where it's a little bit different. We also have additional burdens as a wireless provider, additional things we have to go through that most developers don't, and I'll get to that further down here, and I'll demonstrate. And the next section is our landlord authorization, we have a simple leasehold interest in a portion of the subject property, you put antennas on a portion of the roof, we're gonna rent a room in the basement, and our equipment goes down in there hidden inside, it's a hundred and sixty-four square feet, and then we run, at the rear exterior, we run an external cable tray up the back wall, paint that to match the brick, and then the antennas are up on the roof, so it's what we call a stealth installation in the sense that once this is built, nothing, you're not gonna notice really that anything goes on there other than this bump out on the, on the penthouse, but it's hidden, there's no visible antennas, there's no visible equipment and so forth, and it's all hidden inside. So, we have a leasehold interest with the property owner, that's his letter of authorization allowing us to make this application tonight. Under tab four, I put it as a routine matter on my application to field card, tax, math, and D., just so you can familiarize yourself with the subject property. You all know where it is, write down on the main sheet there. Under number five are the FCC licenses of Verizon, I put that in, so on the record, it's shown that we are an FCC licensee and therefore afford a certain protections under federal law under the telecommunications act. You'll note that Verizon has seven licenses, so we're almost like seven carriers in one, and we've been around a long time, we have cellular, PCS, AWLS, we're trying to broadcast all of this from this one site with what these multi-function antennas that do dual purposes of both transmit or receive multiple different antenna channels and so forth, but it's a, it's a complicated, the, the real estate portion of what we do, what I do, as a planning zoning guy, is very, very basic, you're gonna have much more complicated applications in front of you than what we're proposing, we're just talking about a simple installation on a roof. The engineering behind how that all works, that Mr. Brown handles, that is complicated, but we don't need to get into that, everyone has a cellphone, we all know we need a signal, and, and these, under tab five are the, are the seven licenses that we're authorized to broadcast from in this vicinity. Under number six is Mr. Brown, actually, is Mr. Brown's colleague, Mr. Valente's RF report. Now, there are plots in there, and I have larger ones here, and I, one of the longest visits you saw, had a wireless application in front of you, but you've probably seen before, before and after, we're, we're broadcasting both at twenty-one-hundred megahertz, which is a higher, PCS or AWLS frequency, and then seven-hundred megahertz, which is down at this so-called cellular, represented with the different colors, and you can see there's a problem down here with the twenty-one-hundred megahertz, but you may say, well, I made a call, I was a Verizon customer down there, or someone in the audience may say, I made a call down there this afternoon, I don't think there's a problem. Here's what's going on right now, this, this other chart shows it much better, is that this-
Will you move the chat, sir? Could you go back to the yellow and green one for me for a second?
Sure.
Which ones, which ones, which, you said?
The yellow is twenty-one-hundred, and the south, the green is seven-hundred, so you can see, there's a, there's no yellow right here in the vicinity, that now there is, this is before, this is after.
Okay, so the yellow is good and the green is not so good?
The green is showing that the yellow is not existing down there, 'cause it is, it's got a problem down there that we're trying to rectify, but you may say, well, I made a call, what's the problem? And we get reframed this a lot, so the problem is, this is showing what's happening now, right now, the signal down there is coming in from this site we call Wareham Five, it's a tower over here off of Route Six that you permitted a couple of years ago.
Oh, by country lines.
Yeah, and, let's see, it was, uh, two thousand and fifteen, a hundred and fifty-foot tower on Brown Street. So, a lot of, the signal's coming over from that tower, or it's coming down from this phone, that's what we call Wareham Four, which is a hundred and thirty-foot tower, okay?
And that was out behind Home Depot, correct?
Uh, yes, I don't know for sure, but yes, I have all the addresses in the same report.
It's by twenty-five, you can see on twenty-five.
It was from, uh, page six of the report, yes, it's got all the addresses of the, so anyway, the signal's coming in from these other locations, but what that's doing is it's overtaxing those surrounding sites, it's, they're doing more than what they've designed to do. Back in the old days, when networks were first designed, it was sufficient to have a tower, towers spread out from our distances, 'cause it was just for talking, you know, and there weren't that many people on the network and everything. Now, with digital signal and everyone's got a smartphone, they're downloading data and music and everything, it shrinks the footprint down, there's this phenomenon in our business called footprint shrinkage, where the more people that get on the line, it actually shrinks down the coverage footprint because we're operating at a finite amount of power regulated by the FCC, you can't just go crank it up, you know, it's, this is what it is, so the more people that get on the line down here, now, the subject property is in a, in a dense commercial area, there's a lot of activity down there, a lot of traffic, foot traffic, people driving around, relative to like a more rural or residential area, correct? So, there's a lot of activity down there that's using bandwidth, taking away from these surrounding sites, they're not able to function properly, you might drop a call down here and not be able to make a call, so what we're doing, not just in proposing Wareham, but we're proposing this all over the country, is this densification of the network by filling in these gaps, these holes, and these problems, a site here, a telephone pole over there, whatever, this site is low, relatively speaking, if you look at that report in tab six, uh, the page six of that, it lists all the surrounding sites, the average height of our antenna center line, not the tower height, you know, if there's a hundred and fifty-foot tower, we, we may only be at, you know, a hundred and twenty-five feet or whatever, our center line height averages a hundred and thirty-six. We're only proposing sixty feet here, and you may say, well, that gotta do it for you? Yeah, it is, because we don't wanna be too tall, or then it like broadcasts back and interferes with these other ones, you know, so we wanna be down low now, back in the day, we used to be a hundred and fifty foot everywhere, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and ninety, and we still need to do that in areas where there's big, broad areas of coverage problems. This particular site, 'cause it's down in a sort of commercial area, and it's being serviced by these other ones that are fairly nearby, but they're not quite doing the trick, we can be down at sixty feet and do the job. So, this other plot down here shows the after picture, where here's, here's the way it is now, here's what would be after, where now, listen, all the green is what would be provided by that subject property, pretty much cover that whole Main Street area, that whole, you know, distance like a mile, over a mile, across the river, that area would be filled in. That will allow, that will allow these surrounding sites to relax and perform as designed. So, that is the, that is the need for the site under tab six. Under tab seven is Dr. Hayes' report, now, as the board may be aware, under the telecommunications act, the discussions of the radio frequency, the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions is kind of an off-limits discussion, we're not supposed to get in all of that, to the extent that we comply with federal guidelines, so it's in the board's right to ask, well, do you comply? Is this thing, so rather than have a Verizon employee crank out a report, says, yeah, of course we comply, we hired Dr. Hayes, an independent health physicist who has a PhD in radiation safety, with the question, is this going to be complying with FCC guidelines for RF emissions? And his answer is yes, on his first page, he says it in my expert opinion, I'm quoting Dr. Hayes, now, in my expert opinion, this facility will comply with all regulatory guidelines for RF exposure. But the other thing I think is very interesting that Dr. Hayes does in his report is on page six of eleven, he's got this chart, and if you look at it closely, it shows the RF coming off, you know, very nearby, and then it kind of dissipates off, the highest it ever is, is, you know, four-point-six to seven-point-four percent, so around five percent, five percent, say, on average, of the limit, so that means you could have twenty more of these installations in that same location and still be complying, and that's an unrealistic and silly number because there aren't twenty other licensees in the area, there's only a handful of us, there's only, you know, four major carriers now doing this sort of thing, so even if you put everyone on this roof, we'd still be complying, so the, my point is, and the point of hiring, hiring Dr. Hayes, is without waiving any of our protections under federal law, we offer this as a courtesy to the board, as a courtesy to members of the public to demonstrate that not only are we complying, but it's like such a non-issue, it's such a low-powered thing, it's like a non-issue, it's just basically like a low-powered college, amateur college radio station, we're just gonna be broadcasting around that sort of Main Street area, it doesn't go far beyond that. Now, in number eight, I included a copy of our, the state historic preservation letter, it's not really a letter, they take a rubber stamp and stamp your letter back to them, but basically, it's mentioned earlier that wireless providers have additional, we have some benefits under federal law, but we have some additional burdens, and one of those burdens is that we have to comply with a full NEPA process, there, a conventional real estate developer doesn't, so if a conventional developer wants to do something, they need to go to the zone and get a building permit or so forth, we, in addition to all that, have to file a full NEPA report and check for endangered species and historic preservation problems and so forth, so part of that process is to reach out to the Massachusetts Historic Commission, State Preservation Office, to ask them, in their opinion, well, what we are proposing have a detrimental impact on historic properties in the area, and, and as you can imagine, that can be problematic if you're in a historic district and you're proposing some big visible thing. Here, we're proposing, first of all, we're not in one of the local historic districts, there are some nearby, for sure, but we're not in one, and we are proposing a stealth hidden installation, the equipment's in the basement, the antennas are gonna be hidden behind some sheathing, you're not gonna see anything. So, they wrote back, again, they don't write a letter back, but they take our consultant's letter, and then they stamp it, and you'll see that on page eight, or tab eight, where they write back saying, it's been determined that this project is unlikely to affect historic, historic or archaeological resources, so I, I brought that in there to show that if the state says, hey, it's not gonna have any more impact, that kind of goes into my argument under the finding that what we are proposing will not be substantially more detrimental to the existing. We have an existing building, it's legally not conforming as to height, we're gonna request respectfully to bump it up a little bit, the state concurs, you know, that's not gonna have a big impact, so I put that in there for that evidence, and then under number nine are some photos where we took pictures before and after of, you know, up one end of Main Street and down the other, now, this is a situation where if you're too close to this building, you can't see it, 'cause it's on the rear penthouse, but you get farther back, so you can see the one picture taken from our end of the, of the street versus the other end further down, like, like, looking back at it, and you see before and after, and it shows a bump out on top of that penthouse, it's probably better to go to the plans and show you what that looks like, what we're proposing, everyone has a half-size, a pulled-out set of plans, we have a full-size here, and official plan, we got our butter screens, and if you go to Z-two, or look here, this is the building, you know, roof view looking down the building, and over here is the penthouse, so basically, it's an existing penthouse that-
Is it one on the roof of the elevator shaft?
Yeah, and so, basically, there's an existing penthouse here that we are proposing to mount our antennas to, and just, but then hide them, and enclose it to the same footprint, that's, that existing penthouse is a, is, I'm sorry, twelve by ten, twelve feet by ten feet, so we're proposing to match the same footprint, put the antennas inside, they'll be on structures that'll hold them in, and if this was in a more, if this was in an industrial area or a more commercial area, then we would just, we would say, that's what we wanna do, and leave it at that. We took the extra step of proposing to sheath this, to enclose this in this stealth sheathing and paint it to match, so the effect will be, it's a bump out of that, it'll look like a big fat chimney, basically, but all the antennas, the antennas will be hidden, and the existing penthouse is white, it's brick painted white, we propose to paint ours white, we're also proposing to paint the backside of it to, let's see, here, north, so the north side, north-northwest side, from this, this side, it looks like they recently painted it, if you're seeing from, the, looking at it back on this northwest side, it looks like it needs a paint job, so we're gonna propose to paint that existing when we put ours up, so it'll be one uniform bump out. So, basically, it's antennas on the roof of the existing penthouse that will then be hidden behind this fiberglass sheathing, there's composite, this material that is transparent to the RF signal, you know, we can't build a wooden surround because that, the signal can't get through that, so it's gonna be a material, a high-tech material that will appear as if it's just a bump out of that, an increased height of that, but the antennas will be behind there broadcasting through that material, typically some kind of a fiberglass or composite.
Does it, does it get a roof or is it open to the sky?
Then, on top of that, that's open, because no one, there's nothing around there that's hired that can look down on it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about wind, that's open.
Yeah, they're gonna, they, that's what the engineers do, is figure that out, they're, they have, they do call it, they're gonna replace the existing roof, you know, so they can structurally have the solid thing to bolt all this stuff.
Well, they don't wanna put an antenna on top of a roof and have the roof leak under it and have to take the antenna down.
Right.
It's like a solar panel.
Yes.
I get it.
So, that's the gist of the application, and again, very simple as far as the real estate side of it, it's just antennas on a roof, hide them, stick some equipment in the basement, and I wanted to go back quickly and just touch on, I'm not gonna read them all, but I just wanna go through the elements of the bylaw, so on the wireless end, again, we pretty much comply or it's not applicable, 'cause so much of it applies to towers, the, there is a provision in there that satellite dishes located in the buildings shall not exceed, you know, ten feet above the highest point of the structure, so that's, you know, this isn't a satellite dish, but that's the closest I could come to, that it's even close, so we're staying within that ten feet, we're not going higher than ten feet, but I will point out in your bylaw, you allow freestanding towers to go up to a hundred and ninety feet without a variance, a hundred and ninety, we're only proposing to bump an existing building that's at-
Not in nowhere, on Villageville.
So, this existing penthouse is at fifty-three, we're respectfully asking to go to sixty-three, a third of what, you know, a tower might be, and hat, less than half of what the average of all our other surrounding sites are broadcasting at. The nonconforming, the finding, you know, change, the standards, the change will be not be substantial, not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, so I pointed out that letter from the Mass. historic folks saying, they, in their opinion, it's not adverse, it's, it's not a problem, and, and if you think about it, okay, we got this existing building, existing penthouse, it's bumping it up, so A third of what, you know, a tower might be and less than half of what the average of all our other surrounding sites are broadcasting at. The nonconforming, the finding, you know, change, the standards, the change will not be substantial, not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing. So I pointed out that letter from the Mass Historic folks saying, they, in their opinion, it's not adverse, it's, it's not a problem. And, and if you think about it, okay, we've got this existing building, existing penthouse, it's bumping it up. So it could look from a distance, you know, the closer you are to it, you're not going to see it. The farther are you away, you'd be looked back and see that what it appears like, maybe a fat chimney or something. And we often do that sometimes on buildings, is create what we call faux chimneys to hide antennas. That's kind of a typical thing in our industry. The variance portion, I just want to quickly touch on that, it's in the narrative. But the, your bylaw pretty much mirrors the, uh, the language of 48, section 10 with a little bit of tweaks. But to break it down, you know, in 48, second ten, it's a paragraph, I believe in your bylaws, it's a paragraph. Well, to break it down for analysis, a little bit easier to put it in different chunks. So the first chunk is that factors relating to the topography, you know, the soil condition, shape or topography of the subject property. So this property, this building is topographically unique. There's none other like it around in the sense that it's got, it's, wireless folks are a little bit different in how we try to find sites. You know, a lot of businesses want high traffic count or they need a loading dock or they need visibility. We need latitude, longitude, and height of the sea level in relation to our existing sites and where we're connecting in from. And is it, they have to be right here? No, there's of course a little bit of variation, but not too much. I mean, it's pretty much got to be somewhere in that vicinity. So in that vicinity, down there in that zoning district generally, this is the only building. It's very unique in the sense that it's, it's already outfitted with this existing penthouse. It's, it's topographically unique in the sense that it's in those parameters, latitude, longitude, and height of the sea. And the structure itself is topographically unique in terms of height above ground, AGL of that existing penthouse. There's nothing else around there like that. And we have to be in that vicinity. Then, the, owing to such circumstances, a little enforcement would be a substantial hardship. Okay, if we don't have this, yeah, as I showed you with those plots, okay, you might be able to make a call there tomorrow or anything. But over time, this is, this is a problem down here. We wouldn't be out here spending money with all these experts and wasting your time if we didn't need the site. We need the site because we have a problem with drop calls and productivity, connectivity in this section of Wareham. And this is something that is a substantial hardship for us if we can't broadcast our signal properly. We, we'd have to come up with some other, you know, plan B, which would be building a new tower or do some, doing something much more onerous, much more adverse, much, much more dilterious perhaps than simply making use of an existing structure. And that the desired relief may be granted without detrimental to the public good. I, my position is this is promoting the public good. We're promoting public safety and the public safety inconvenience by providing enhanced wireless telecommunications. And it's not just the user that walks around, home based businesses, regular businesses, your visitors. I'm sure in the summer you have more visitors, people connect, you expect the connectivity that they're used to at home. They shun and almost go away from dead spots and problem areas. So if, if the whole Main Street area of Wareham is a problem for wireless, it could negatively impact business and tourism and a lot of other things, and public safety responding to accidents. And all, I think I showed you with those charts. If there were a lot of network traffic in those surrounding sites, you wouldn't be able to make a good call down here. That's the reason why we need the site, that densification that I was talking about. So in our opinion, we meet the standard under 48, section 10 for variance. We meet the standard for finding in the sense that we're not proposing anything more detrimental that's already there. We meet the special permit requirements of the wireless by law and the general special permit requirements, which, as you know, cover, you know, the use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. All this is going to be is this bumped up chimney looking thing on the roof. Everything else is hidden. The site is appropriate for the use. Yes, it's absolutely appropriate, we sought it out specifically for that. There'll be no nuisance, no. Uh, there are appropriate utilities. We don't need any utilities that have power and telephone. There's no water sewer, there's unmet, unoccupied installation. Uh, it will not propose a substantial detrimental to the neighborhood and so forth. So it, it's all in my narrative, I didn't want to get into reading that. But in that, for those reasons, we respectfully request your approval as proposed in, because we feel we're providing a service, some infrastructure to the town at no cost to the town, that everyone will benefit from.
All right, uh, very well. You did, uh, personally, you did very good in all the statute requirements except the hardship. The hardship is the building, the land itself, if it has a hardship, not, not your company. But that's my, that's my personal opinion. But you, you went over the hardship that it's very feasible for you guys to do it. The building, the, the building, the land has the hardship, not the person or the company.
Yeah, and that's why I respectfully pointed out that we have the benefit. And I, I hesitate to do this because I don't want to be like the guy throwing around federal law. But it is a fact that we have a little bit of leeway in that respect, Mr. Chairman, under that next T L D Whalen case, where the need to close a significant gap is another hardship. And that's, that case law has allowed companies like us to get use variances in towns that don't allow use variances. Here, all we're asking for is a de minimis dimensional variance.
My other question is, if the federal government mandate and cannot prohibit, we cannot prohibit installation of cell towers. The other question is, why would you need a variance? I mean, I know we have a 40, 44 height restriction in Wareham Village. However, like, like the federal and state law mandates that we cannot stop, stop it from, is correct.
So you're reading from the building commissioner's letter, right? Okay, so the building commissioner, I, I thought the same thing. When I was first given this file, I thought, oh, we're not proposing a tower, we're going on the roof of a building. You can put antennas on the roof so as long as you don't go higher than 10 feet. I thought this is a no brainer, this would be a, either a building permit or at the most a special permit. The building commissioner responded to Mr. Richard, if Mr. Richard reached out, saying, no, you know, he said, because the existing building is nonconforming to height and now we're increasing that. We're increasing the nonconforming, that requires a variance and that's in your bylaw. And so I read that and thought, okay, I think he's right on that. So we're respectfully asking for this variance, only to the respect that it's just a increasing amount of nonconformity.
I, I do understand and I see what Mr. Queen are referring to here. We usually, when you have a nonconforming house or business, usually in setbacks, say all the houses are 10, 8 feet from the setback and this new business wants to be, eh, wants to be 8 and setback 3, ask for 10. So this is where like, if it, it shows a hardship and it's like existing nonconforming and we'll go with this. But in this matter, like I said, I'm not too convinced, but we're going to go pass it to the board members and we can go back to your consultant, that'd be fine?
Yes.
And this matter, Rob, when we said in this case, Veronica, you could, you could discuss and make comments by Rob and we'll be voting. I'll start, Rob.
On the equipment that's going to be utilized here with these antennas, how much of an output is out of each one of these antennas to cover the area that you're proposing here? How much wattage are we talking here?
A couple hundred watts, I know Dan, if you know for sure.
Yeah, there'll be a.
When I come forward, state your name on the mic, please, for the record.
Oh, sure, Dan Brown, RF engineer with C Squared Systems. The site will support all four of Verizon's licensed frequency bands, 700, 850, 1900 PCS on AWS. Um, and each one will have a radio mounted near the antenna that feeds it. And each band, it's in the range of around 120 to 180 watts into the antenna.
Is that per antenna?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my other question is, you were talking about mounting the equipment in the basement of the building?
Yes.
Could there be a problem with anything going forward as far as, maybe any flooding or anything like that?
I mean, there's always, with the, the.
In other words, have you taken that into consideration in the process of building that electrical? Because that's going to be a lot of electricity and electrical equipment in that building.
It's actually, you know, there's a misconception about that. Wireless installations operate on DC power, 28, 24, 48 volts DC. The AC power is just to convert over. So it's very, it's, it's low power as far as electricity. We do need electricity, of course, but it's not a big high powered thing.
Is there a battery bank involved here?
And there's batteries and.
How many of the batteries, sir?
Um, I don't have all the details on those. Those are typically things we provide at construction level drawings, but typically a battery backup. But it's a, it's a very standard sort of installation that we do this in buildings all the time. And that would be worked at, at building permit level through the, the building commissioner and the state building co, 780 CMR, we comply with whatever is required to make that a safe installation. But we have installations in churches, up in church steeples, in office buildings, in basements of commercial buildings all the time.
How many people are in that area full time, 24 hours, say, live in the area?
Well, we're showing it down here in the basement. I haven't personally been down there, Greg, do you, have you been down in the basement?
You mean, who lives in that building?
Yes.
On the floor, I don't believe anyone.
Isn't it?
No, we're taking over an existing, um, like, storage, kind of like.
Excuse me, sir, would you get your shirt, I'm sorry, good guy.
No worries.
Come on up, say your name, so they.
How's it going, guys? I'm Greg Richard from TRM. Uh, we're taking over an existing, um, basement, like, equipment room. It just has a bunch of tools in there, uh, and it has an existing, you know, wires come in. So we're not really taking away anybody's space.
The reason why I asked the question, I was just curious as to the people that may be in the area. 180 watts prayer antenna, that's a lot of wattage coming out of those antennas.
No, the antennas are up on the, up here.
On the roof. The equipment is just the.
But that's going to cover the area, what that type of.
So this, so again, sir, this is, if you go back to Dr. Hayes's report, um, which is under, um, tab RF emissions compliance report. Tab seven. Seven. Dr. Hayes's report shows, you go to page six of Dr. Hayes's report, it shows the percentage of the, so 100% is the limit, the federal limit. They have a higher federal limit for workers. People that are into industry are allowed to, they assume they know what they're doing, they have to hang all, hanging around antennas. They can be even a higher level, but general members of the public, they want it down here at this lower level. This installation's down around 5% of that. That's why I said you could have 20 more of these things. You could pepper this roof with antennas and still be compliant with the federal law. This is such a low powered thing. That's a complete non-issue.
Thank you.
Yes.
So how high does it need to be to be effective, the antennas? Could you put it on our, the lower building?
No, because then, you know, and then I asked, you know, why can't we go on the roof of this building? Why do we have to increase it? Because then this thing would block us. You know, we're down there, this is relatively speaking, a fairly tall building for that Main Street drag. We have to be above all that stuff to broadcast out, otherwise the signal just hits a wall across the street and stops, you know? But we don't have to be up at 190 like a tower would be, or 136, which is the average of all our other surrounding sites. We are much lower, but you know, you get down too low, now it's not doing its trick. And then across the street, as you know, up the hill, you know, the topography goes up, you know? So we're trying to basically cover that, that sort of corridor of Main Street.
What does the back of that building look like?
Just flat, white.
Is it the block building with the green paint and the?
That's next door, that's the lower one. That's the lower one next door. So it's white, it's white.
And you propose to run the cables on the outside of the?
So on the back wall, we're going to come out into your point, sir, by the building corner or flooding. So what you need, cables will exit the building above the flood level.
Okay.
And go up what they call a cable tray where they're mounted to the brick. You know, it's grouted and epoxyed or anchored into the brick and then covered with this, this what they call a cable tray. And that's painted white, so whatever color the building is, it's painted the same color to match. And they just go up and then over the roof and then up on top of the roof will go inside this existing penthouse. So nothing will be seen other than that cable tray going up there and then this bump out. Uh, Jim.
I'm all set.
Jake.
Um, I think the center of town would, uh, really needs this. I've been in that actual building and cell phone service isn't that good. So I think it's something the town needs to do personally.
Yeah, I agree. Ken.
I just have a suggestion that we call this a wireless communications facility in accordance with the zoning bylaw to, to identify this appropriately rather than as a cell tower.
Because that's what our bylaw prefers to. Okay, all right, I'm just going to go to public. Anyone here want to speak in favor? In favors?
Yes.
Richard M. Serkey from Plymouth. Uh, I've rarely heard a more thorough, uh, presentation at breakneck speed.
Going to take your job very soon. All right, anyone else want to speak in favor, against? Anyone want to speak against? All right, uh, just going back to the, Mr. Queen's letter. He calls it for a special permit over 40 feet, then he's calling for a variance. So I guess it's the variance because the building is a nonconforming building. So it's, we have two things we have to vote for, I guess, the variance and the special permit. First, they exceeding the 44 and high. And you have, well, to be honest with you, I don't intend anything about all this, even if I read it 10 times. But all I know, you, you are documented that there's no signal there or there's not sufficient signal.
Not sufficient, yes.
Not sufficient.
That, that we're having.
And the federal government mandate, we cannot say no to a tower if there's.
And it's only going to get worse, with more people in.
No signal, what's the federal government say, no signal or so, so?
They use this term significant gaps, you know, and then you're like, what's a significant gap? So the significant gap is that we have, as I pointed out in those charts, we have a signal down there now, yes. Especially probably this time of day, there's not a lot going on, you know, there's a lot of businesses are closed, there's not much traffic. You probably have a strong signal, but in the peak hours when there's, businesses are open, there's a lot of tourists and a lot of people walking around, a lot of people on their phones, that's when it takes the signal away. And the signal's coming all the way from, you know, a couple miles away from these surrounding sites. Where they're now over text, they're trying to do their thing, where they're in their neighborhood. And now their signal's been taken away from Main Street, you know? If enough of that goes on, all of a sudden it just, those footprints shrink down and then you're left with nothing on Main Street and you drop calls. And the reason we get these sites, you know, I've often wondered, there's a finite amount of money in the budget every year to build sites. So I asked one time to an RF guy, how do you, how do you know how to spend this money? Where do you, you know, we're, we're doing this every night, all across the country. Every night, there are people like myself out doing these things, site by site, bit by bit, trying to fill in these holes. How do you decide where they go? A lot of it is customer complaints, you know, enough people complain, I, I, you know, I'm going to switch to somebody else because we got a problem down there. And then, and then people take note, hey, we do have a problem down there. And it's verified that, that you, we need this. And, and I've heard people say, even for new towers, you don't need that because I have three bars or something. I can tell you, we don't do this, we don't come out and do this for practice, to stay all tuned up for when we really need the site. This, we're here because, spending all this money and wasting your time because we need this site, absolutely. And it's only going to get worse over time with that.
Okay, very well, I personally don't have a problem. The variance or the special permit, but I'll go back to the board. Bob, you want to add something?
No, I, I, the only, I just have a comment. It's probably going to benefit the hospital big time, absolutely big time, because I know there are issues in that building. Uh, I've seen that over the years, so that, that's, that's a good thing, that's a real good thing.
All right, last comment, somebody? All right, uh, I'm assuming you have a professional engineer, structure engineer doing the design for mounting and all that?
Absolutely.
You, you present to the board, to the commissioner, the link, palm rules, official stamps and all that.
Yeah, this is a firm will stamp now and.
Yes, that's the structure, is that?
No, it'll be CDs in a structural, building.
What do you ask before that?
Everything that requires a 780 CMR work.
I'm sure you're going to do that. All right, anyone else would like to speak, say anything else?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close 5-19. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Rob, all in favor, say aye.
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 Of course.
I've got something else I'd like to say.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit and a variance for this applicant.
As presented?
As presented.
With the normal standard conditions?
Correct.
Do I have a second for Jim's motion?
Second.
Second, Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of course, thank you, John.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good job, thank you, you've done this before.
Very well. Thank you.
So Verizon direct.
I really liked the thought he had.
I've got a, I've got a four story building in Naperville, I've got a, a secondary, you know, they're going to, they're going to rent the space and then re-rerent it.
I didn't.
Is that going to take care of the problem down in Great Lakes area?
One side at a time. We'll be, we'll be back. I was going to bring a dozen eggs back.
Put it down this one bar for Rob.
Rob, thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Where are you from?
Right. They need skies on here?
I was impressed with.
Hey, you want to come forward 6-19, they need skies, maybe one great neck over.
Come on, me.
I'm her husband, he might step up to.
I'm her husband, might be my step-up too.
We don't mind your hand up.
Yeah. She, she wants me to sit over here.
Just gotta give us a minute.
Yeah.
We don't have any fancy graphs or charts or speeches set.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Did you, um, press this down for Janet, Jake, please? Thank you.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number six dash nineteen for a special permit from the requirements of Article Three, Table Three Twenty, and Section Three Fifty-two, and Article Fourteen, Section Fourteen Fifty, of the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Denise Kissel, ninety-one Great Neck Road, Wayham, Mass. Zero-two-five-seven-one, seeking to construct a riding stable located at ninety-one Great Neck Road, Wayham, Mass., that appears on assesses map forty, what, one thousand, in the R sixty zoning district.
All right, very well, this one, Veronica, set on this one? All right, name and address for the record?
Uh, Denise Kissel, ninety-one Great Neck Road, Wayham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one.
Uh, Jason Thompson, ninety-one Great Neck Road, Wayham, Mass.
Now you wanna tell us what you're doing?
Uh, well, uh, well, do you go ahead and tell them?
Um, basically, we have, um, uh, four goats, and we're not looking to do a riding stable, we just wanna have our goats.
So, it says here riding stable and-
Goats unfortunately come under the riding stable. If you have-
That's what you were advised to-
Yes, if you have less than five acres and you're asking for a stable permit, um, it's all considered under the riding stable, so we're just looking to have a stable for goats.
They're dwarf goats also, so they're small, they're like sixty, like, they, maximum is about sixty pounds for them, and they're definitely not rideable.
How much, how much, how much ownership property?
We have an acre and a half.
All right. I get some plans I can share with my-
I guess, uh, section, uh, article three, section three twenty calls for a special permit for under five acres, acres and as well, and also article fourteen, section fourteen fifty calls also for a special permit. So you're asking for two reliefs. All right, we're gonna pass it to the, uh, Rob, what do you have? Rob, would you like to say something?
Uh, questions you need, do you wanna come back to you? We could come back to you, wanna look at it in there? Veronica.
Um, I'm just wondering about how many, you tend to have total, um, do you, you just-
That's it.
That's it. I mean, we were thinking maybe a miniature donkey to add, but that's about it. Yeah, it's pretty much max, yeah, maybe an alpaca, but that's, we're, yeah, no, we're not, we're not planning on having a lot more.
Do they make miniature alpacas?
They do, they have smaller ones, yeah.
So what is, I'm, I'm wondering-
We need numbers.
Oh, I am, we have four right now, we have four goats right now, and then maybe we would add another, a miniature donkey, and so maybe five, six total of these smaller animals.
Six, maximum.
Yeah, we wouldn't do any more than that.
If you go seven, you have to come back, so six.
Six is, that's it.
All right.
This is a property that burned, correct?
It is.
So does this, I'm thinking about future tenants, what does this open up for future tenants, having a stable on the property, could they potentially have-
We could, we could condition it that if they sell the property, it goes away. You'd be okay with that?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So we're not going, we're not going into the property, we're going into the applicant? Am I hearing, am I-
Special permit, you can condition it.
Okay, condition, okay.
I, I don't know if you can do that on a special permit.
Yeah, you could, you could condition special permit, not that-
On the, on, not on the user.
On the land?
It goes with the land, runs with the land.
Right, they gotta record it. Right.
Right, but, uh, but what you're granting runs with the land. You can't, you can't be, I don't, I don't think it'd be extinguished.
How do, we almost grant like, uh, apartments, or, or a deed restriction, same idea.
Now, is he suggesting like, sometimes somebody will come and want an in-law, and will say, well, we'll give you one.
For a variance-
As long as you own this house, but when you sell the house, the, the, it's, it's no longer exist-
The variance is different than a special permit.
That's written into the statute for the variance.
So we're cons, we're, we're mixing variance and special permit here in our conversation? Is that what I'm hearing, is that?
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll just condition it to six total between goats and mules.
And, and you're saying so for future sale, this cannot be-
I guess once it goes on record, yeah, I, I-
It is farmland, I mean, it's always been farms and farmland, it's always been a dairy farm.
We're talking about the legal terminology about it.
Okay.
All right, uh-
So they may make property-
You have questions?
Um, no, I don't see a problem with this at all.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm interested to see if there, uh, are any neighbors here that are opposed for some reason, but aside from that, I have an issue with-
We brought neighbors.
There you are.
All right. These are all our budding neighbors.
That, that, I mean, that, that, that would be my only additional consideration.
Peter was, the, he's closest to us, he had band practice tonight, couldn't make it, he's definitely for it.
Yeah, Peter Gordon.
We're on very good terms with all of our neighbors, and they all enjoy our, the animals in them.
Okay, so, uh, I go to the audience, anyone wanna speak in favor?
I'm in favor, we were confused by the riding stable thing.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, ma'am, if you're gonna speak, you gotta talk, identify yourself and make your-
Just say your name and address and say-
Roxanne Ellis Raymond, eight Crooked River Road, Wayham, Mass., and I'm in favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Fitzgerald, eighty-nine Great Neck, right next to him, totally in favor of it.
Thank you.
And?
Anybody else?
Everybody.
Yeah, right.
Alan Tozey, ninety-four Great Neck Road, and I'm in favor of it, there's always been animals in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Four-legged ones. Thank you.
That's the one where the goat sits on top of the roof.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, what time.
Anybody else that would like to, um, you heard on the public record?
All right.
This is in favor, right?
Okay, there, anyone against? I hear none. Okay, let's, any, uh, anything else you wanna add? Nobody, okay, hear none.
Don't think so.
Let's move to closer.
I move to close the public section of this hearing.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, abstain. Okay, uh, let's go, uh, for motions.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Standing conditions.
Okay, do we have a discussion on conditions?
Um, I think we wanna limit them on the number.
Okay, I would say maximum six.
Can we limit size?
Size of the pen, you mean?
Of, no, of the-
Of the animal?
Right, 'cause I'm just thinking later on, if somebody comes in and wants to have horses there, then what happens to the make, you know, six horses?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Can we put in no horses? Is, is that something we could put in, say no horses in the future, no? What about miniature pony? Would that fall under that category?
Yeah, because they're letting me do miniature donkey, it could be a miniature pony.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's, that's good, that's, what, what do you like to do? Good conditions. So maximum weight, go by weight or by-
Maybe by weight.
Sure.
All right.
How much would a-
Like over five hundred pounds maybe, that's like a horse is like eight hundred pounds, right, or twelve hundred pounds?
Yeah, but if you're gonna have horses, we wouldn't approve five or six, but if you're gonna have goats that weigh fifty or sixty pounds, we probably would be okay with that, that's her point.
Right.
Yeah, but we were thinking of getting, but getting-
One other time, go ahead. Yeah, so, go ahead.
Oh, so, but it, like, we were contemplating getting a miniature horse, uh, or perhaps a donkey, or, you know, but it would be small one only, yes.
I suggest we're gonna say five goats, one miniature horse, or one mule.
So the problem is, you're taking a special permit, um, not for use, right, and I'd say you can't have goats on the property, you can, you do indeed have goats on the property.
Right.
You're within your rights to have the goats on the property.
Yep.
All we're here to, uh, to decide is whether we can give you a special permit to have a facility for those. So I don't think we have any authority to limit anything related to a use they already are entitled to. That's just my opinion, right? Nobody disputes that, you're entitled to have the goats you have there now.
They're just pets, yeah, they're, we don't, you were done.
I break any, these down bylaws, right?
No, but they, they-
It's just that if you're, you're gonna build this structure, you need a special permit.
Are there any special-
No, no, this, we can regulate this special, that's why they're here for a special permit, because what happened if they put a hundred goats?
I guess if they were seeking a special permit for the use, being, the ability to have the animals, then that's one thing.
But it makes it more convenient and kind of like, if somebody wants to go, if somebody happens to have twenty goats without a shelter, but the shelter kind of changes what can be done.
I just think, I, I just think we're outside the bounds of what we can, we're, we're able to live under, but that's my opinion.
Um, I'm becoming more confused as the conversation goes on. Um, are we approving a structure or, or a, um, corral?
A corral is a structure, right?
It's just like a cor, yeah, there's a, a corral.
In a building?
The pit, it's on the map there, yeah.
Building?
Yeah, no, well, there, we would, we would-
There is a building.
Construct, there's a small one, yes.
There's a stable, there's a stable building, like, there is a building on there.
It's like eight by ten, it's tiny.
Yeah.
How many goats do you have now?
Four.
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 Yeah.
How many more do you plan on having?
No more goats.
No more goats.
No goats.
Yeah.
Shut donkey, shut, hot shot horse?
Yeah.
Be nice.
Would you have to add anything to that existing?
All right, we were thinking about just adding like a, a little structure in the back, something, you know, maybe another little area for them to be, but it's not completely essential.
Look it up, the most recent version, right, and, and this says table three twenty and section three fifty-two, and then go to section three fifty, fifty-one, and then we, there is no three fifty-two. So I can't look that one up. Article fourteen.
Well, and if I, and, and you can make your determination that it's under section three forty point two, animal-related uses, uh, riding stable, any structure, any land use for a stable where horses, ponies, mules, or donkeys are maintained or kept for hire.
Three forty point two?
Three forty point two. And you look under the table, the use table, uh, three twenty, you'd see animal-related uses.
They do.
Less than five acres, less than five acres, right?
Correct.
So that's a special, uh, permit, either as an award or a field.
Well, I, I don't mean to split hairs, but we've got a, a public notice here that says they're applying for relief under section three fifty-two, which there isn't, and now you're referring to me to three forty point two, which there is, but it's not in the public notice. So did somebody from the public not have the ability to look this up, and do we need to re-advertise this to be technically correct, and it won't matter how we go, in favor or against? That's my question.
Uh, your, your concern is over whether or not the-
Proper notices-
Whether or not the, whether or not the reference, uh-
Yes.
To the bylaw, do you, no, I don't think so. I, I don't think, I don't think the notice that, you mean, notice of the hearing, and, and, but, in terms of a specific, uh, bylaw, I don't, I don't think that, that error would nullify the, the, the otherwise adequate notice.
All right, let's keep going where we're doing. So, let's go back to the, why don't we put in our conditions, maximum of six animals, understood?
Yeah.
All right. And we'll call five goats, one miniature, yes, Rob? Rob, you wanna say something?
Uh, would that include the existing animals that are already there, or, is that something we could add?
Total.
Well, I'm total, totally, okay.
Okay, so, uh, for, for special permission requirements. Okay, if you wanted, okay with that?
Sure. Sure.
You okay with this?
Yes.
Yeah.
What is it at that exactly?
I'm just gonna say maximum five goats and one mule or miniature donkey.
I mean, I don't thi, I don't, I, I, I would, I would approve it without specifying, uh-
Okay, that's fine.
You wouldn't be, you, you don't wanna be destroyed.
But that's me, I, I, I think I might be alone in that.
Can I, can I, oh, just like, let me ask council, can you condition special permit?
You can condition special permits.
Right.
Yeah.
But, so, so why can't we do it here?
You, you can, but you were, you were suggesting conditioning on the ownership.
No, no, we, no, we don't want this, consider this special permit, what's gonna be recorded, not the owner, for the land.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's fine, you could, as many conditions as you want.
I was gonna say, what happened? Everything changed last fifty years?
No, you can condition that, I, my, my, uh, my point, maybe, maybe I was being, uh, I'm being a little bit too, uh, I'm, I'm splitting hairs, but my point is that they're, they're not seeking a special permit that would allow them to have animals.
No, they're allowed by right.
Exactly, right, so, so it seems not quite, um, right, in my opinion, to-
Just they're allowed to have-
Close conditions that aren't related to the structure.
The fence, the corral, or whatever we get.
Let me ask you, let's, let's say I'm allowed to put a new skull lock by right, so So you can mandate how many cars, of course you could put condition how many cars, can I quote thousand car?
Well, does it say the, if the car is in the back, or?
Right, but that, but that, that goes.
Let's not argue.
But that's my point, if that, if in that instance.
All right, we're going too far, all right, so that.
I mean, what is, what are your thoughts on this limitation on your future pet choices?
I just wonder if they need a permit at all.
Well, this is what, that, that's actually my point, I mean, this, this was farmland, this is existing, I mean, this house was from eighteen ninety, it was all farmland, I'm like, when I found out I needed a stable permit, I was like, what are you talking about? This is farmland.
We were never told to come here, we're just asking to be permitted to do this.
And my issue is, is that because my animals become my pets, I don't want anyone coming to me and telling me I gotta, I gotta get rid of my pets. So that's kind of the reason why we're here.
Spent a lot of time and money just to be here right now, to do this.
The reason you're here will be because you have less than five acres.
Correct.
That, yes.
All right, let's continue and get over it. So we have a condition, maximum of five goats or lambs, and one mule or miniature donkey. What else, any other conditions?
Do you have any concerns about those restrictions, i- in particular, as it would affect your future life? Because now is the time.
I don't know that we'll get any more goats, 'cause he's saying five goats, I think we've maximized, we've got our goats, now we were looking at possibly one, a miniature donkey, and then maybe the potential for a second one, but I think we could only, let's put it this way, if you're a responsible land, like, animal owner, you're going to make sure that they have the proper land that they need in order to have a good life. And that's what we're, yeah, and that's what, so I think we would probably do one donk, miniature donkey or pony.
Okay.
He can always come back and seek a minor.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, we could, we can come back when the time comes.
Besides, we drink their wine, we act one in a rooster.
Or the alpaca.
Who made the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, alpaca.
Anybody's made one yet, did we close the public?
Yeah, we did.
We closed the public.
Make a motion.
On that.
Let's make a motion.
I, I make a motion to grant a special permit to allow them to have a, um, as drawn here, the size that they want, a goat pen.
With maximum five goats and maximum one mule or miniature donkey. They have a second on that.
Second.
Okay, any other discussions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, five zero, the caddis, thank you.
Thank you.
This gets my goat.
Keep that goat on the roof. Drags me up every time I come around that corner.
Wasn't there a letter from Tom Brady in favor? Wasn't there a letter from Tom Brady in favor?
I'm not even going there.
Can I?
Search for the goats.
What's something like this?
Paperwork. Should that ever change?
It should, but in the, in the, uh, in the bylaw, we don't have, we don't, so, that's why the commissioner can sit there. Because we don't have, uh.
And so.
Goats.
Who'd you have on this, who'd you have on this, you wanna go on?
Okay.
What the commissioner does.
All right, guys, that's yours, Jim.
All right. I wanna let that, I wanna let him get that signature back.
Scary, not dumb to get on.
Ladies and gentlemen, could you, could you either talk quieter or move down the hall? Thank you.
All right, very well. We're gonna move to an open public hearing. Thirty-four dash eighteen, Stephen and Cheryl Yarasha, line two of the road. I will recuse myself from this matter for conflict. So I guess, uh, Bob and Rob will be sent. Okay, counsel.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing, is this, is this, has already been read in?
Yes, it has.
It has, it's open.
It has been read.
I don't need to read this. It's open, thank you. Uh, I saw the date, so, so, um.
Good evening.
For the, for the purposes of the record, would you get us up to speed? Who are we, what are we doing?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Richard Serke, and I'm attorney in Plymouth, and I represent Stephen P. Yarasha, who's sitting behind me, and his wife Cheryl A. Yarasha. The original petition in this case sought two forms of relief. It sought a use variance for an in-law apartment, and it also sought a variance for the front setback of their shed. Their shed is the building in purple that I'm pointing to on the easel to my right. And this is Jordan Road, which their house has frontage on. The lot that they own is outlined in yellow on the subdivision plan to my right. The, the use variance for the in-law apartment, which is located on the lower level of the building, that request was withdrawn following my recordation at the Registry of Deeds of a declaration of restriction, uh, which indicated that the lower level of the subject property shall be restricted to a non-rent paying occupant who shall have unimpeded interior access to the first story of the subject property. That occupant happens to be Mr. Yarasha's mother-in-law. And because of the fact that she is not a rent paying occupant, and because she has unimpeded access to the rest of the building, there's no need for a use variance for the in-law apartment, so I wrote a letter on December twelve withdrawing that request. And all that's left before you is the need for a front yard setback for the shed. This is remarkably similar to the case you heard earlier this evening, uh, presented by my friend, Mr. Bello. An accessory structure that's located too close to the, to the way because of the fact that the bylaw requires an accessory structure to be no closer to the way than the main building itself. Now, looking at the subdivision plan to my right, you will see that part of the land is wet. It, it borders on what's called Upper Pond. And that is adjacent to the subject property. The, the, the subject property is, is located at the end of Jordan Road, which ends right with the lot.
Can I interrupt you just for one moment?
Certainly.
Just so that, I think I know where we are, but I, we go up past the YMCA and we keep going, and Jordan Road's up there on the left?
Yes, you, you go up.
Okay, I just want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if I was on over Jordan Road, off Great Neck Road, or Jordan Road, or.
Charge Pond Road.
Charge Pond Road, you're.
You're up Charge Pond Road.
I had to.
Yeah.
Get it clear in my head, thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. So we are located at the end of Jordan Road, before Upper Pond and Lower Pond, and wetlands that, that intrude upon both the subject lot and the lot across the street. It's also located directly across a cul-de-sac that forms the turnaround, that forms the end of Jordan Road. And the, the only conceivable affected lot would be the lot across the street, which is on lot eighteen on this plan. And you'll note that because of the presence of the cul-de-sac, the house on lot eighteen had to be located substantially far away from the main portion of Jordan Road in order to allow for the, 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 the front yard setback. The, the house across the street was acquired, surely.
Why don't you just say about why the shed had to be put there?
I, I'm gonna get to that in a minute. The, 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 I'll get back to it because it has to do with the wetlands. The wetlands that are immediately adjacent to the house. If, I'll, I'll answer that question right now. If the shed had to be located as far back from the road as the house is, it would be too close to the wetland area in order to be really functional. And what happened is, is that, uh, when, when the, the shed was placed here, it was, it was placed there because it could not practically have been located as far back from the road as the house and be functional because of the proximity and the topography to the wetlands, I have some pictures of that if you'd like to see it. The, the shed was located in its current location, um, without permits by, by an innocent mistake. We canvassed the neighborhood, and I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you some pictures that I've handed out. And, um, the first picture that I'm gonna show you is a picture taken looking at the property just before you, as, as you're in the cul-de-sac. And you will see, if you look carefully, the structure is, if you look through the trees, at the base of the trees, the, the center three, three trees, you'll see the, the accessory building, uh, it appears in white behind those three trees, right over here. The second picture is taken looking right at the house from lot eighteen, looking across the cul-de-sac to the Yarash's house. And you'll see, it's a very handsome house. It, it's taken, and you can see the outbuilding on your left. And you can see the cul-de-sac right in the foreground. And then the third picture is taken from the Yarash's house, looking south, and you can see the, the accessory building, the shed, as they view it from their house. Now, the, above, the, 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 I've also circulated to you a, a petition that was signed by several people in the neighborhood, um, indicating their support for this petition. And the, the signatories to the petition own the lots that I've outlined in green. The most affected property, as I say, is the, the property directly across the street. Uh, I'm told by Mr. and Mrs. Yarasha that they have no opposition either, and most significantly, their, their lot was acquired after the shed was already in place on its current location. So they bought their property seeing the shed right across the street. But as I indicated, their house is substantially set back from the cul-de-sac in order to accommodate the front yard setback of a hundred and twenty feet. The, the shed as it is, is, is twenty-five feet, more or less, from the layout line of Jordan Road. And then you go across Jordan Road, you go to the cul-de-sac, and then you go down to where the house sits. You asked about, um, uh, Ms. Debonese, you asked about the, um, why the shed, why the building could not be located, um, next to the house, and I do have some pictures, if you need to see them, showing, um, the close proximity of, uh, the wetland line to the side of the house. Pardon me?
Shed is currently in existence.
Yes, yes, it is there, and it's shown on all three pictures. It was placed there without permits by an innocent mistake.
How long has it been placed?
Mr. Yarasha, how long has the shed been there?
Been in place approximately a year.
Conservation doesn't have any disabled, it's in the water?
No, no, we're, uh, seventy, seventy-five feet back.
Is that hurt fifty?
No, it's twenty, twenty-five foot no-touch zone, and anything within.
Sorry, Bob.
Twenty-five foot no-touch zone from the wetland donation, and then the hundred and fifty feet is an area that can be controlled by the Conservation Commission, but that doesn't mean you can't do it and do anything on it.
But there were no permits or anything about this, so it is a hundred and fifty feet. For, for any new structure to be built.
No, not a hundred and fifty feet.
Not a hundred and fifty?
Buffer to wetlands, border, border vegetated wetlands is a hundred feet, that's a jurisdictional area.
But it's jurisdictional, that doesn't mean you can't build there. That just means.
But it requires approval to do so.
Approval, that's right.
We don't have Conservation Commission. We're.
So it's just because this property, that the, the shed is closer to the street?
Correct, it, it's the twenty-five foot setback of the shed from the layout line of the road that brings us here.
Oh, just, you're like point six off.
No, no, we need, the, the bylaw says that an accessory building, as, as was the case with Mr. Bello's case, case, the bylaw says that an accessory building has to be as far back from the road as the house does. And so, that's, we're not. And, um, and Mr. Yarasha just didn't know that when he put his shed there.
You don't give a move that shed?
No, not, not me personally, no.
No, I understand, but that shed could be moved?
Uh, no.
That would you plant up?
No, I, I was.
See, that's us.
I'm doing a various.
It's okay to leave it right where it is. Oh, okay, okay. Question I have is, you were talking about a hundred-foot buffer, uh, wetlands, or did I hear that correctly?
That's right, jurisdictional buffer.
Okay. On the plan, it says fifty-foot wetland offset.
That's right, and so.
Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct, that's fifty feet from the wet, bordering vegetation, wetland boundary.
Okay.
That's the line that they're showing on that plan.
We have to satisfy you of various conditions, as you know, uh, in order to justify requesting a variance. One is the uniqueness with respect to soil shape or topography. And I submit to you that the proximity of the nearby wetlands and the, uh, the fifty-foot jurisdictional line that eats right into the property itself is a unique characteristic of the soil and topography of the land that justifies the request for the variance. I have to also satisfy you that denial of relief would, in, would result in substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And I submit to you that there's no other practical solution in terms of locating this shed on their lot where it would be of any practical utility to them. The, um, their septic system is located in the southeast corner. The house frontage is where I'm pointing to now, and, um, there's a limited backyard. And, uh, for that reason, the place where the shed was innocently located is the most practical solution for it. The, as I indicated, this particular lot is literally at the end of the road, so it's not a, it's not a, it's not a lot that is in the middle or the beginning portion of the road where people who are getting to their properties farther on the road would pass by constantly. This is, in order to be near this shed, you have to be going to the Yarash's house. Or you have to be going, y, y, you wouldn't even have to be going to the lot across the street because you would turn left at the cul-de-sac. So the only persons who would get as far down Jordan Road, uh, in order to be close to this shed would be the Yarash's themselves because the road doesn't go any farther. And, um, and for those reasons, I submit to you that there are unique circumstances of soil and topography, and that the denial of relief would cause substantial hardship in terms of locating their shed on their property in a location that would be equally practical to their use, and that there would be no detriment to the public good, as evidenced by the fact that a substantial number of petitioners have signed it. And Mr. Yarasha assures me that the person across the street is not opposed to it as well, is that correct, Mr. Yarasha? And they acquired their property after the shed was already in place. And, uh, there would be no derogation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw because no one's interest as codified in the bylaw would be diminished or derogated from. And so I'm respectfully requesting, uh, a variance to allow the, the shed that is there to remain there.
Okay, so, I know you guys interrupted a few times to ask questions, and you seem to have something burning in your bonnet over here, 'cause I've heard you mumbling as he's been talking. So I turn to Bob, do you have some questions for the, uh, can?
No, we, uh, we were just discussing, uh, as far as what the actual rules are as far as placing a shed like this. Would there be any problems going forward with the town, uh, where this doesn't fall within the parameters of what the bylaw says?
That's why we're, that's why we're seeking relief.
We're gonna approve them relief from those bylaws.
Yeah.
Marla, do you have any questions and comments?
No, I just wanted to say you could say that the front setback is twenty-five feet required, but it says here it's fifty.
No, the, 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 the front yard setback is, is existing now as twenty-four, just twenty-four point five feet, but the bylaw requires it to be back here.
The, the setback in general from, for frontage is fifty, right?
Twenty.
Front setback, I'm reading fifty, I don't know.
Where?
Just for clarification, but.
But, Marla, are you reading the bylaw, or are you reading the plan?
No, I'm reading the plan.
What does the plan say? They're telling you.
Just in general, from the road, it should be fifty feet, whether it's a house or a shed.
Okay.
That's just what I'm just trying to.
Okay, correct. The, it, it says fifty because a variance was granted in June of fifteen in a prior case before this board, allowing it to be fifty, but this is still less than fifty.
Right.
So that's why we're here. Jake. Did I, uh, Jake?
I'm pretty familiar with these properties, and there's really not much more, any other places they could put the shed on this property, so, um, I, I don't have any problem with this.
And. I've heard comments from the board, um, return to the public, is there anybody here this evening that would like to make comments? If, uh, in favor of this application? Is there any none? Is there anybody here in opposition to this application? Also here, none. I return to the board, suggest if it is appropriate to close the public, or if it is here. Wait a second.
Second.
Um, may I say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I think everybody's expressed their interests and concerns. Before we take a vote, uh, there's a couple of things I'd like to point out, they're in the file here. One of them, I'm gonna read into the record, even though I personally object to it because it's a, an, a, a digital communication that requests to remain anonymous. So we have an objection from an anonymous party, and I don't like anonymous objections. But our endorsements, simply because everybody that comes here, we ask them to state their name for the record. But I do wanna put into the record. and I do want to put into the record that this is in the file. I don't want somebody running down the town hall and saying, "I sent in an anonymous objection and it wasn't presented." So it can be presented, but I personally give it zero merit, my personal position. That said, I will read petition number thirty-four eighteen regarding construction of a shed next accessory apartment at nine Jordan Road, Wayham, Mass. We are abudans of this property next to nine Jordan Road, and we object to their request for a shed in their front yard that has been in place for approximately eight months, maybe longer. Per George Stewart, the current shed placement violates town bylaws. Further from George Stewart, they list four reasons. The shed is located in the front yard, the shed is too close to Hollow Brook Reservoir, the shed blocks our view of Hollow Brook, the shed is the first thing we see when we pull into our driveway, it should be located behind the house. Per our conversation with you this morning, I don't know who you is, we prefer to remain anonymous, but feel this is very important to the neighborhood and to the aesthetics of our property. We also feel it is important for all of us to obey, follow local laws to protect all our properties, something Mr. Ushara seems to have a problem following. So, the anonymous party can feel as though they had their five minutes of glory. Going further in the record here, I am holding a petition to the Wayham Board of Appeals, and it states the following, residents of the town of Wayham request that the Wayham Board of Appeals grant the application of Stephen P. Ushara and Cheryl A. Ushara for the use variance for an existing shed on its current location at nine Jordan Road, Wayham, Mass. Zero two five seven one, which property I depicted on map eleven, one-one-four E as lot PG one-four in zone R sixty. And it's signed by one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight signers. The Goulds at three, Teresa Gould at three Jordan Road, Tevin Gould at three Jordan Road, Karen. Fitchmeyer, at five Jordan Road, Bob Fitchmeyer, five Jordan Road. Matthew Kuna, eight Jordan Road, Suzanne, I'm having a hard time reading it, at eight Jordan Road.
No, sorry.
David Westcott, six Jordan Road, and Carolyn Westcott, six Jordan Road. I also add that to the record, having read those into the record, we have a motion to either approve or deny this application.
Can I ask just one question?
Sure, you can.
Did you say that a variance had been given out to other people for the same situation in town?
Today. Tonight.
Today with the big shed, the first one we looked at.
The garage.
That big garage that he's going to put in, it's kind of a similar thing.
Yeah.
For clarification, for clarification, so that there isn't any confusion. Basically, the bylaw says that an accessory building shouldn't be closer to the street than the residence, than the primary building. This shed is closer to the street than the house. And that's really what he's asking for a week for.
Right.
Just like the prior applicant who wanted to put a garage that was going to end up being closer to the street than the house. They've got reasons why, they've stated their reasons why they felt as though this is the best, only place they can really put it feasibly, and why that creates a hardship, if you will. And they're asking for us to grant a variance that we will vary from the requirement of it being not closer than the house, and that's, that's what they're asking us to do. They're asking us to say, okay, you can vary from the bylaw and have your shed closer to the street than the house.
And it's not an accessory apartment, as it states on the.
They're not asking for an accessory apartment.
That was removed.
Yeah, okay.
And, I don't know, through all this, I just have one question, it's just of Mr. Ushara, his representative.
Yeah.
What's the shed used for?
To storage of.
Lawnmower?
Lawnmower, yep, that's it, two, two lawnmowers in there.
Is that big enough to put a car in it?
No, no, not at all. I don't know, life type, two car garage.
Stuff people put in their garden sheds.
That's it, that's all they got in there. And boating, boating supplies, that's all.
Yeah, we're close to public hearing, I think, we're close to.
We're close, yeah, why?
You're taking additional testimony.
Sorry, you're, you're right, sorry. My apologies.
What, I wanted to point out one thing based on Bob's comment. Doesn't matter what precedent, there is no precedent that's set by any action you take. Each action is taken individually on its own merits, and regardless of what happened in previous. Or, or what happens is, then you're changing the bylaw if you continue to do this action without a tammy vote. So you have to think of yourself as being the, the judge of each application coming for you on its own, in unique merits.
Okay, thank you. What is sure if getting involved with a bylaw that has been written for a specific purpose, and then having somebody come in and say, "Well, I'd like to do something other than the bylaw," so that individual gets permission to do it, then the next individual comes in?
Does not automatically get a yes.
Okay, that's what, that's what.
Yeah, every, everyone is different that comes in, some people come in, they try to lie to us blatantly to our face, and you have to go off that.
I've heard of problems going forward with stuff like this, and that's why I asked that question. Thank you for educating me on that.
Okay, so I'm still looking for a motion either to approve or, or deny.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Then I have a second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say a.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Done.
Thank you.
Let's go, we move, we need to sign this. Petition went one dash nineteen, Jessica Nees of thirty-four, haven't you asked for continuance?
Thank you. You guys want to sign this for us? We have all some need to sign. Both, Kiwi Cruz himself, we need to both. Anything you guys have that you're not taking home from this folder, I'd rather like to put it back in the folder.
I'll fill in the filings and, I'll fill in the filings.
You fill in the, thank you.
All right, we're on Jessica Nees of thirty-four, can we get a motion to continue?
So moved.
All right, we continue, Jessica motion, I mean, Jessica Nees of two, March thirteen, do I have a second?
Second.
May I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, we have a, a request to continue four dash nineteen, LDE hold a six, that's the dispensary, for all, as well as March thirteen.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
One favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is that last one, did anybody sign that?
It's right here.
Okay.
I'll get it to you.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't not have it in the folder. Thank you, sir. So any other business, uh? Ken, did you want to go first?
Where's the gentleman, he left?
You just needed to, uh, point out that very blatant, maybe.
It's okay, he could go apply for an application, for an application. Can I marry?
I don't need it.
I didn't want to, that's his one.
Yeah, yeah, I don't need it, I, I need it.
All right, anything else you guys would like to discuss?
They can add something in.
Yeah, I, I do, a couple, a couple of things, one, waiting for Mr. Cirky here. There was a, an application that was made by WaterWiz for the expansion of the parking lot and joining parcel land, it was previously the Chinese restaurant. It was, it was extended for a long period of time, and there were, requests was made for constructive approval of the application. My own opinion from reading the, the state law and the court cases is that that time had passed, and it was no longer legitimate to request constructive approval for the application. Mr. Cirky had suggested a covenant in, in place of actually going through the permit at this, at this time, or trying to, to litigate the constructive approval issue, wherein the application would wait until the completion of the Cranbury Highway improvements that are being proposed by the state.
So.
And within six months of that time period, the application would be re-submitted.
Three months.
Three months, I'm sorry.
After the state built the highway?
After the state builds the highway. So potentially you're looking at three years for construction and then to see what happens, and then have the application come for you. This was passed by town council, and town council responded saying, "Gentlemen, if this is the way," they were responding to Richard Cirky and myself, "if this is the way you want to go, you may do so. Policy decision, comma. Keeping in mind there will be further decisions to be made under paragraph two."
This is, if I may, I agree basically with everything that Ken said. There was a, when, when I last appeared before you in the January meeting, there was a consensus, as I saw it among the board, that the petition had been constructively granted as a result of inaction for a sufficient period of time. I followed the statutory procedure thereafter by sending a note, a memo to the, all the parties in interest, and a memo to the town clerk indicating that the petition had been constructively approved. And under the statute, if twenty days elapsed after I've sent the notice to the town clerk and notice to the parties in interest of constructive approval, thereafter, the town clerk can be asked to sign a certificate to that effect that there's been no appeal, and I record that. Now, after I sent the notices out, as I just described, Ken indicated to me that he disagreed with the notion that the board had in fact constructively approved the petition by its inaction, and we had a back and forth about applicable case law. Ken's position was that in order to claim constructive approval, I had to claim it immediately after one hundred days had expired from the filing of the petition in May. In other words.
Within fourteen days.
Four, four, did I, what did I say? Fourteen, within fourteen days.
Within fourteen days after a hundred days.
Exactly, exactly. Now, what I did was I, we granted several continuances beyond that because I wasn't, I wasn't at that point of the opinion that, I, I thought that in fairness, I ought to give more time to the board in order to be able to make a decision. But ultimately, my client ran out of time, and we, we asserted constructive approval. Now, rather than get into litigation or a big unpleasantness about whether or not the board had in fact constructively approved or not, and Ken gave me an overture, can't, isn't there some way we can compromise this? I came up with the idea that really the, after Route twenty-eight is reconstructed, we're really going to know what's on the ground, and we'll be able to design a better parking lot than we can now looking ahead and envisioning what it's going to look like. So I said, why don't we do this? Put a condition on the approval that says within, when you notify me, when you notify the owner that Route twenty-eight has been completed, we have three months within which to apply for site plan approval again. And if we don't submit that application within three months, then the site plan approval now will lapse. So this is a site plan approval that's time-limited, and it's time-limited to allow for the construction of Route twenty-eight. And in that, and, and at that point, we have to come in and start all over, but at least at that point, we'll know what the road looks like and be able to design the parking lot accordingly.
Site, site, site plan approval, you gotta go site plan review before.
Site plan review, whatever, yeah.
Okay, fair, all right.
So, so that's, that was the idea, because the main feature here is the reconstruction of Route twenty-eight. And when I suggested it to Ken, I asked my client, and she said, "That's fine." And obviously, it has to be enforceable and recorded at the registry. And so I drafted the covenant, and the covenant says site plan, it recites the facts as I just described them and as Ken just described them, and it says site plan approval is granted subject to the fact that it can disappear, and it will disappear if we don't do anything within three months of being notified that the road is complete.
So whose burden is it to notify the road?
The town.
One of the things about the completion of the road is that, and the completion of the parking lots, is the access into them from the highway. And of course, the curb cuts are part of that construction of the new, of the new road.
Right.
So they're going to be defined by the new construction.
Yeah, it makes total sense to me.
Here's my question.
But, but if you, if you would later want to change those, that access points, you'll have to go back to the state, through the state process and, you know, tear up existing construction.
So you believe the state will put a curb cut for the block?
Oh, the state's going to put in curb cuts, probably the existing curb cuts that are there. So the question is, are those curb cuts appropriate to what you think should, should the operation of the?
We're going to have to live with whatever they put in.
No, no, you don't understand, but Ken said, if we leave, we let it go the way it is.
Yeah.
They are going to put a curb cut for the Chinese.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
One for the river.
Yeah, yeah.
However, is the board, the whole idea, I believe the board wasn't in favor of having another curb cut for the Chinese vessel. We wanted to have one entrance to the bow, is not two or three.
Well, I don't have any control over what the state will do.
Correct.
Yeah, well, actually you do.
I think our opinion on that might change depending on how the.
Yeah. It will definitely change.
It's a part of the site plan.
Obviously, right now you don't, everybody's thinking left and right turns, but our opinion on whether or not we feel that it should be restricted to two could change depending on the outcome of the road, I think.
Well, we, we know what the road will look like, the question is the location of the curb cuts and that.
Well, they're going to have to come back for site plan and we'll make it closer.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it'd be up to you.
We'll make, if, if the board's still here and agrees to close it, they'll have to close it. But personally, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm more in leaning, like, in favor of not signing anything, just leave it the way it is until such time. Don't sign a covenant, nothing.
Well, I, I'm still sitting here saying, who gets to, who is the authority that decides whether constructive approval exists or doesn't? Is it this board?
Well, there's a disagreement, it would be the court.
I mean, it's law.
It would be the court.
The law can constitute this, but the law says after a hundred days from filing an application for a variance, if we don't come up with a decision, within fourteen days, the applicant has the right to apply for a constructive grant.
I understand that, but what I don't understand is each time the applicant and the board mutually agree to an extension, does it or does it not move the date forward?
It does, it does.
So did he or did he not apply within fourteen days of that forwardly moved date?
It doesn't, it doesn't move the forward, it doesn't move the date forward. The, the cutoff point is the hundred days from when the application was submitted, not the public hearing.
Not, but Mike, but.
I believe people are extension too. Everyone on the board has to have agreed in writing that they're granting an extension for that in a hundred days to move this.
Is it a hundred? No, we've ext, that's my question. During the process of them coming back, however many times they came back.
Yeah.
When we started getting to the point that we were coming down on a hundred days, either the applicant or the board, and in some instance, it was the board, requested an extension because we didn't have membership.
Right.
We asked the applicant, will you grant us an extension?
Yeah.
The applicant said, yes, we will.
Yeah.
In other instances, the applicant said, maybe, um, uh, we need an extension because.
Yeah.
Will you grant us? And the board said, yes, we will. So by extending the time, how is it that the time, how, how, how is it that the hundred day time?
Because you didn't extend the time. What you did was you continued the public hearing, you didn't extend the time.
There's a difference, there's a difference even on the form that Ken has. When you request a continuance, you're not necessarily waiving the time requirements, that additional amount of time. That's a different.
So his contention, I'm just trying to get.
Yeah, no, no.
So his contention, and your legal mind tends to see some validity in his contention that that hundred day drop dead point, or fourteen days from that hundred day point has, had expired before you requested and it could be challenged.
Uh, yeah, I disagree with Ken on that. Ken's position is, is that once the one hundred days expired, which was in August, I had fourteen days within which to claim constructive approval. And I didn't at that time because we continued the hearing for many, so, many, many subsequent sessions. And, uh, and the hearings were continued and I did not, uh, just as a matter of collegiality, I did not claim constructive approval then. Now, I take the position that, uh, be, I'm not, since, because of the subsequent continuances through the fall and into January, it would be, it, it, the law doesn't say it, since we're now at the end of January, I had to have claimed the time ran out in August when I gave, when we agreed on continuances all through the fall and the January. And that, that would, that would make little sense to me.
Well, it does to me, but I, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand the argument and that's what gets you into a court and that's how lawyers make lots of money.
And I don't want that.
They take two different positions and they drag it out for as long as their clients are willing to pay.
I, I don't want that.
I get that. But I know you don't and, and I'm not saying the town wants it either.
Yeah, right.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it in my head straight, what, where we stand here.
Yeah. There, there was a case, there was a case, and Ken pointed it out to me, a case in which the one hundred days expired and a year and a half later, with no intervening subsequent hearings, a person said.
It's constructively.
It's constructively approved. And the court said, no, you can't do that just out of the blue a year and a half later. Our case is quite different because our case is the one in which after the one hundred days expired, there were several subsequent hearings. So the claim of constructive approval didn't come out of the blue a year and a half later. It came at the heels of the most recent continuance date. But there's no point going, going to battle over that.
No, I, I, I'm just trying, I'm just.
Right. There are two points of view.
If it doesn't apply to this particular case, it, it helps me and this board to understand where we are.
You yourself said, I think, at the January hearing that we've waited long enough. Those were your own words. And, and, and that's why I left here believing that we had constructive approval and I followed the, the procedure. And so I was surprised when the town clerk notified me that she wouldn't sign the certificate because she had talked to Ken and Ken had indicated that he had problems. So that's why we had a, a, a series of back and forth emails and Ken said, well, can't we just come to some resolution? Because, uh, Water Whiz is a substantial player in the town and, and we'd like to preserve goodwill. And so that's why I came up with this idea, let's wait until the road is done and then we'll come back.
All right, so now, I'm still on the same subject.
Right.
It sounds like I'm going down a different path.
Yeah.
All right. The app, we, we talked about curb cuts.
Yeah.
Okay. So the applicant, in, in my, in what I've interpreted, listening to all this.
Yeah.
The applicant would prefer to keep, and let's call it the Hong Kong Island property.
Yeah.
Okay, for the sake of, the applicant would like to keep that property as a separate, under a separate, an ownership entity.
She took it that way. She took title that way. Yeah, yeah.
And, and so now, putting myself in the shoes of a separate entity owning a parcel.
Yeah.
I would want a curb cut.
You would.
If I own a parcel as an entity and I'm sitting here listening, that this board wants to deny that parcel a curb cut, um, I, I got, I've got a prob, if I'm the entity that owns that parcel, I've got a problem.
And they're gonna get a curb cut under the layout.
So, so I'm just, I'm just bringing this up for.
However, however, the problem becomes, you cannot have a, just a park, the bylaws are aware, don't allow it just to have a parking, just a parking. Or if we are to treat it as a separate entity, we will say, okay, we'll, if you're not complying to our rules, we could fence it all away so you're not crossing from it. Do you understand? So it's a cap, it's, it's.
It's a catch twenty-two, I get it.
If you go by the rules, but it goes both ways. Do you understand? If they choose to say, okay, it's a separate entity, then we say, okay, we're gonna treat it as a separate entity. Do you understand?
For a process of time, what do we need to resolve?
We need to see if we gotta sign this covenant.
Yeah.
However, you guys gotta read it. I, I don't have a problem with the substance of, you know, the substance of the, this covenant. I'd like the coun, council to say it's a go.
He said it's your, it's your call.
Let me repeat what Ken said.
Yeah. Because I co, I copied him on my dialogue with Ken.
So basically, what's Council, uh, Councilor Cirque saying? We leave it the way it is, they'll use it the way it is.
Yeah.
Until the road's finished. When the road is done, then within three months, they have to come see us with a new site plan, site plan.
Right.
With a new application, everything.
Right.
They fail to do this, we'll ha, they will have a path from commissioner's season assist.
And then they can, then they can reply for, like, relief or something.
What, what Rich Bowen, Town Council said, uh, all the way from the other side of the world was.
He's in Dubai.
If this is the way you want to go, you may do so, period. Policy decision. Keeping in mind, there will be further discussions to be made under paragraph two.
That's one, that's the one we have to come back. In other words, we, knowing, knowing that we'll be back, we have to come back.
So we're not, we're just, we're kicking the, the.
You're kicking the can down the road.
Kicking can down the road.
Until the road is done.
Road's done.
So I'll go on the record, just so everybody knows where I stand. I'd really like to see the applicant challenge the decision on the constructive, um, uh, approval because it would help us in the future determine whether, you, you know, it'd help us because there'd be a decision made, you know, so.
There is, there is case law. They may dispute it, but.
Jim.
But I'm just testing.
I mean, we have a new paper that Ken prepared from now on. Continue is the hearing, like every day like tonight, we continue the hearing. But there's a different request. The, the, the applicant will have to request the time to perform, not the hearing. He wants to extend the time of performance or time of action. So we have a different request.
So, what you.
We can extend, continue the hearing. Okay, we'll come next week until we have such plan or Dr. Neighbor.
We can continue the hearing.
Or we can continue. The time of.
The deadline, a hundred days.
Exactly. So it's gotta be specific. That, that, this experience make a, make, made us learn something.
Make, make them, make, make the applicant check both boxes.
You know what I'm saying?
And that's the reason why on the, on the agendas, we put down the deadline.
However, the town, the, the board could say, I'm gonna give you a next hearing, but I won't extend the time or vice versa. Then.
Yeah, we can say the same thing.
Right. Then the board say, okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing right now and make a decision if you're not gonna extend the time.
Let me say this. Constructive approval is like the, the nu, the nuclear weapon. No, no applicant, I, I, before I claimed constructive approval at the January meeting, I called Rich Bowen in advance.
I know, you didn't wanna do it. That's why, that's why you're in this predicament.
Didn't wanna do it. Right, right. And, and, and so, uh, this is much more preferable to me because, because no board wants to have granted something by default.
So I know I'm the guy that's making everybody stay here late, so in, in summary. If the applicant's happy.
Yeah.
The rest of the board is happy, I'll stop asking questions.
Okay. So are you guys signing this or not? There's no place for us to sign. I, oh, that is. Okay. So somebody wanna make a motion?
You wanna read it first?
Yeah, that's it. Want Jim to read it?
Yeah, I'll, you, you wanna read it?
Yeah, you'll read it.
I don't have a.
You need to, you need to, what, please, earn your money.
Do we need to read the entire document?
Expect, it's only two pages.
Page one just recites the facts.
Okay, yeah. Do you think we need to read the entire thing?
Sure. She's suggesting we don't need the facts, we need the summaries. That was just a suggestion.
Well, I'm suggesting we, we're entering a document into the record, so it's in the record and we don't necessarily need to read it.
No, I, I, I.
As long as you, you feel comfortable with what it says.
You want the whole thing?
All right, okay.
No, no, I'm. You read the other one?
No.
I'll read it if that's, whereas RM, RM Realty LLC, here and after RMRM, is the owner of a certain parcel of land located at thirty thirty-five Cranbury Highway, Wayham, Plymouth County, Massachusetts. Being more particularly bounded and described in certificate number one two five zero five seven at the Land Court Registry District of Plymouth County. Two, on May three, two thousand eighteen, RMRM filed a petition with the Wayham Zoning Board of Appeal, chairing after ZBA in case number seventeen dash eighteen to create a parking lot on the newly vacant parcel of land comprising the premises. Applicant seeks to use said premises as a parking lot. One applicant appealed the decision by Director of Inspeccional Services dated April seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, that the use is not allowable as a matter of right. Two, in the alternative, applicant sought site plan approval and a variance from the otherwise applicable requirements of section seven sixty, nine ten, ten sixty, and fifteen twenty of the Wayham zoning bylaw. Hearings were held on June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, August eighth, two thousand eighteen, September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, October tenth, two thousand eighteen, December twelfth, two thousand eighteen, and January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Four, RMRM claims that on January twenty-three, two thousand nineteen, the ZBA agreed that RMRM's petition was doomed to have been constructively approved. Five, on January twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, RMRM notified the parties in interest and the town clerk per general law, chapter forty A, subsection fifteen, that the petition had been constructively approved and that appeals, if any, shall be made pursuant to general law, chapter forty A, subsection seventeen, and shall be filed within twenty days after the date the town clerk received such written notice for, um, from RMRM that the ZBA had failed to act within the time prescribed. No part, six, no parties in interest filed any such appeal. Seven, on February sixteen, two thousand nineteen, RMRM sent to the town clerk a proposed certificate of construction approval for her so, for her to sign per general law, chapter forty A, subsection fifteen. On February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, the town planner disputed RMRM's claim that its petition had been constructively approved as a result of which the town clerk refused to sign the proposed certificate of constructive approval. Nine, RMRM and the ZBA wish to amicably resolve the foregoing dispute. Now therefore, RMRM and the Z, ZBA hereby agree as follows. One, RMRM's appeal from the decision by the Director of Inspeccional Services dated April seventeen, two thousand eighteen, that the use is not allowable as a matter of right and is hereby denied without prejudice. Two, site plan approval based on the plans filed with the ZBA is hereby granted, subject to the following conditions. No later than three months following the receipt by RMRM of written notice from the ZBA that reconstruction of Route twenty-eight has been completed, RMRM shall file a new petition with the ZBA to create a parking lot on the premises. If RMRM fails to do so, then the time limited site plan approval hereby granted shall lapse. And three, within three days from the date hereof, RMRM shall submit to the ZBA documentary proof that this covenant has been filed at the Land Court Registry District of Plymouth County and noted on the encum, encumbrance sheet of certificate number one two five zero five seven. And then it's signed by a notary. I don't think I need to read that. And there's a page for all of us to sign.
All right, Ken, so what do you guys think? Make a motion. You guys comfortable to grant this?
Yes. By signing this, what are we going to? I, I kinda lost track.
We agree in two, when the road is, uh, completed, the highway, they have three months to come here and apply for site plan.
Okay. And what you're agreeing to is that there's no hold on the, on the site plan review other than this covenant?
And in the meantime, they continue to do what they best they could.
Yeah.
Right.
And we'll, we'll late, we'll wait for another case in another day to decide the, this, this thorny issue of constructive approval.
Yeah, Jimmy, you had a good point on who's gonna notify them. Does that fall to anybody?
It's a, it's a, it's a town's burden to notify them. The town doesn't notify them, then this goes on perpetually.
Right, but who in the towns?
I'm assuming.
It'd be the office of planning and zoning.
Yeah.
You?
I would.
Them or the building.
Or the building commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go motion. Motion.
Make a motion that we accept, uh, as written and go through the protocol until, wait until the road is finished and then, uh, pursue it from there.
All right, that's second?
Second.
Second by Ken Longton, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I wanna thank publicly thank.
I'm abstaining on this one.
I wanna publicly thank Ken for suggesting a compromise and I think this makes sense.
All right.
I would have liked to test it as, as well in court.
Pardon me?
I would have liked to have tested it as well in court, but I think this is a more appropriate way to deal with it. Uh, one, one last thing. Uh, on March sixteenth, Saturday, there's gonna be this. The Citizens Planner Training Collaborative is gonna be teaching a, uh, having a, a conference session, teaching people like you about how to handle board, uh, responsibilities and what your roles are. We'll pay for the, uh, the session. If you can, if you confront the money, seventy-five dollars, if you're interested in going, we'll, uh, we'll reimburse you.
Where's the, where's the?
And you get, get lunch. It's at Hoy Cross University in, uh, Western. March sixteenth, Saturday.
And, and, and what is it? Tell us how to do what?
Your roles and responsibilities.
Teach you more, give you a seminar.
It's a day.
The whole day?
Thank you.
Yeah, they're like, oh, more sessions.
Sorry, keep it in. Yes, it is, free and active, the other one?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, uh, so, March sixteen.
And I have, and I have the, uh, the presentation slides that Dave presented, the, uh, at the session. If you're interested in getting a copy of those.
Ken, let's just start in, in time on that.
What do you have available? This slide?
I can email it to you tomorrow.
Email it to you.
Eight thirty to four, has a lunch included.
Can you guys move up for a winner at the right?
Jim, read it.
So. Who wants to go and who doesn't? Is that your askers?
No, it's just letting us know.
Oh, okay. It's when you know and, and you're gonna be reimbursed if you, uh, and it's, it's mass, M A S S C P T C dot org. Yeah, sure.
Listen, around, these are very useful, quick summaries.
You want to go up to them?
Yeah, give them up. These are very go, very quick, like, uh, how, like how long is special permit? How long is the, uh, variance?
You said that.
How long to, uh, to open the meeting?
Yeah.
You know, you know, you know, like a quick index. You guys should read them. All right, uh, let's make a motion to adjourn.
So who?
The second.
Second.
Okay, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you. Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you.